Right.
Roll call. Fred Wagnola.
Here.
Dave Gordon.
Here.
Charles Landy.
Here.
Jack Hayes.
Here.
Brian Devine.
Here.
Timothy Rose.
Here.
Kenneth Gilligan is here. Timothy DeGraff is excused.
Yeah, he's probably in his office.
And Charlie Whitaker and Brenna Whitaker are excused.
I'm here.
Oh. Sorry.
No, my name isn't.
Not Brianna? Why don't you believe this?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone like to make a public comment before we start the meeting? Okay, moving on. Chairman's comments? I have none at this time. Communications. Our next meeting is December 26th. It's gonna be at 12 o'clock. Day after Christmas, though. Is everybody sure they want to do it the day after Christmas? It's the last time to talk.
I'm okay with it.
Is anybody gonna go away?
No, I'm okay with it. Personally, I'm okay.
Is it okay with you, Bill? No.
Well, that's why I'm okay with it.
Okay. Purpose of this meeting, to discuss the City of Kingston's request to extend the acceptance of single stream beyond the December 31st deadline. And I guess the mayor's gonna speak to it.
Can I join you at table?
Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for giving me an opportunity to speak. I know that you've received a letter from me last month, and you guys reviewed your last meeting, and came to what I hope was a tentative conclusion. But I have another letter that I'm just gonna read, but also you guys could pass those around just so you can have a copy for your files. Dear Board members of the Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency, I want to thank you for considering the City of Kingston's request for a short-term extension to the transition from single-stream recycling to dual-stream recycling. As you may be aware, the City of Kingston's transfer station does not have the staffing or equipment necessary to accept co-mingled recyclables, and so this extension is critical. Since the UCRRA notified my office of the changes in regulations, the Department of Public Works has been preparing for an extensive overhaul. We recently received approval from the Common Council to bond $400,000 to purchase new recycling totes. We are set to advertise bids for the new totes this month and expect to select a vendor in January of 2019. The request for bids is required in order to be in compliance with the city's procurement policy. The following is a timetable for the city's transition to dual-stream recycling. The City of Kingston will advertise bids for the new dual-stream totes in December of this year. The bids will be opened for the new dual-stream totes in January of 2019. The totes will be delivered to the City of Kingston Department of Public Works in March of 2019. Totes would be distributed by DPW staff or a vendor in May of 2019, and the transition to dual-stream recycling will be complete by the end of June 2019. During this entire process, the city staff will work with a selected vendor to design recycling education stickers for both the old and new totes. In addition, staff will develop recycling brochures in both English and Spanish, which will be mailed to all residents of the city to inform them of the new recycling regulations. The city will utilize all communication tools available to educate the public, including my weekly newsletter, the city's website, and social media accounts, and in-person training at work meetings, special events, and other community gatherings. This public information campaign is critical to ensure citywide compliance with these changing regulations. Once implemented, the city will be alternating recycling pickup each week, with one week dedicated to plastic and glass collection and one week dedicated to paper and cardboard. I've added seasonal staffing to the department's 2019 budget to ensure that yard waste can be picked up in a timely manner while simultaneously picking up recycling during summer months. Based upon the city's proactive steps to adhere to the newly adopted recycling regulations and the fact that the city has and will continue to pay the varying monthly rate for co-mingled recycling materials so that the UCRRA does not incur additional expenses, I request that you grant us the six-month extension so that we may ensure all totes are distributed and property owners are informed. Thank you for your consideration. I just wanted to provide that for the record and would be happy to, you know, answer any questions that you may have in particular about, you know, our plans and our policies. And I also have with me Ed Norman, who is our relatively new superintendent of the Department of Public Works. He's been with us since September.
Mr. Norman, will you join us here if you'd like?
Okay, sure.
Steve, yes, I have two questions quickly. Steve, the City of Kingston has an eight-acre transfer station, fully equipped with a tractor-trailer, loading bin, and the whole bit. What is there that the RRA could do for you that you can't do for yourself while you're waiting for your totes to come in?
I mean, I can speak in kind of the higher level, and if Ed wants to jump in, he can. The transfer station hasn't been used as a fully functional transfer station since Jockey Hill closed and the Resource Recovery Agency closed Jockey Hill. Ever since then, the City of Kingston Department of Public Works brought both, you know, all of its refuse to your facility when it was additional first on South Hill Road and then now at this facility. And so we, in terms of a transfer station, have transferred very little material. We have, in the past, had bins at the transfer station, and still do, to collect relatively small amounts of recycling and/or refuse that's brought in. Currently, the transfer station is staffed a half a day on Friday and a half a day on Saturday. There is no heavy equipment at all located at the transfer station. We have no heavy machinery.
You have a good-sized backhoe there. I was only there yesterday. And as a matter of fact, it was Eddie Boyle who was operating it while I was there. And he was stacking up the yard waste, and I was dropping off yard waste. So you do have equipment there.
Again, it's not permanently there. We do have to manage the yard waste pile so that when the Resource Recovery Agency comes and grinds our pile, it's, you know, safe and manageable. But again, we don't have, we believe, you know, the up-to-date necessary place to be able to have a floor that can be dumped on as well as the material to be loaded into some sort of trailer. It's just it hasn't been designed. The inside of the transfer station building is not, you know, currently up to current capacity. And safety standards, I know that this agency had to do a lot of work to bring your own floors up to standards with push walls and all types of other work. And, you know, those are, again, the types of, you know, safety regulations that, you know, exist now that didn't exist when it was used 35 years ago.
Question number two.
Yeah.
We understand that you have been talking or making a deal or whatever with Republic conveying. Is it Republic? What's the... As far as taking over or handling your single stream, is that happening?
So when I met with Tim a month ago, Tim and Ed and I chatted here, and that's when we first asked permission to continue to have our materials brought here for a couple additional months while we made this transition. At the time, Tim said, you know, he was gonna check with the board. Thought it would be okay, but he checked with the board. But we... He also suggested that, you know, as a backup plan, that we reach out to Republic. We did reach out to Republic. That's who currently processes our single stream with you. And again, Republic indicated that, you know, they would be able to accept single stream as we've been noted, the plant's not closing, the plant is open for business and still accepting material. Our main issue is that we have no one to load the trailers, to load the material or the equipment available to do so, because this is not the business that we're in. The Ulster County Resource Recovery Agency is in the business of processing and managing solid waste here in our county. We, as a small municipality within the county, are not prepared and in the business of doing this. Our business has always been to pick it up and bring it here. For the last two decades, that's what we've done. And so, you know, this is a... For us to take over the management of the hauling, the loading of trailers, and weighing and shipping out, and compliance are all things that a small municipality like the City of Kingston, you know, was not designed to do or prepared to do. And hence the reason why we have a coordinated county agency that... Whose responsibility and mission is to support the municipalities of Ulster County to manage its solid waste, which includes recyclables, not just refuse.
Wouldn't that happen for only a short period of time, though? You're only talking about wanting another six months.
Correct.
So if you and Republic worked out a deal at your eight-acre transfer station, wouldn't that... It wouldn't infringe on any operation that you have going on up there? I've been there. I go there on a regular basis.
I don't have an operation there, and I think that that's the issue, is that during that six months, it would be a huge operational change for the Department of Public Works to find the resources to make that shift just for six months, when my understanding is, is that we cover the fees necessary at this point. We pay the agency $15 a ton to load our material as well as provide the actual cost that you're charged to dispose of the material. And so since July, you know, we've been covering those costs as requested by the agency. And so what we're asking is that those... That same arrangement continue until the city is able to, you know, make this transition. I know I don't have to remind all of you that it was this agency that entered into an agreement between Tim Rose and Mayor James Zatail in 2011 to allow us to transfer from dual-stream to single-stream. And, you know, that was, you know, not that long ago. And so the city made a huge shift over the last four years to be able to move to single-stream and to, you know, ask for us to move completely the other direction, which, as you've seen, we've committed to doing, but to basically take what took four years to transition for us to do it within six months, I thought in July was an unreasonable request. And again, today, I sit here in front of you and say that I still feel that that was an unreasonable request.
Okay, well, I want to address that.
Sure.
Because it's since last April that you knew this shutdown was coming.
Your board voted in June, excuse me.
But we were talking about it, and I think you were included at that time since last April. So it should come as no shock to you, but you're saying things in the press that indicate it was a shock to you. I don't understand that. I really have a problem, a little bit of a problem with that.
Well, if I may, when the board first proposed raising the fees in April, that was the first part of your proposal. It wasn't until, I think, we read it in the paper that the board was interested in actually terminating the service altogether. And I think with every board, it's the responsibility of the board, when an idea is pitched, to listen to public comment, to listen to public feedback. There was a hearing at the Ulster County Legislative Offices, and so no decision was made because there was a lot of feedback, a lot of letters. There was a statement by myself and many others asking upward to not implement the complete change in service policy. And so I was hopeful in June, that at the June board meeting, that the agency wouldn't suspend single-stream recycling, but it did. And so that... At that point, in July, I received a letter from Tim Rose indicating that there was not only a change in fees, but that there was also going to be a change in service. And so since July, you know, we have been working, as you can tell, to move the city toward this process. And, you know, we have 23,000 residents. We're your largest source of recyclable material here at this agency. We bring 250 tons a month. And again, you know, we want to be able to have a good working relationship with the agency, but I think all we're asking for is some flexibility as we go through this transition.
Steve, you said, and just to reiterate for a minute, based on the tremendous shift in policy being thrust upon our community, I expected the RRA would work with us. We've been working with you. We've been telling you what's been happening. And what has been happening to the RRA is a global thing. It's not something that was concocted here in the town of Sorgdies, not at all. And you know it as well... Listen, you know this operation better than most of us do. You were chairman of this. So it should have come as no surprise to you, especially reading that China was shutting us down and that we were all going to be stopped as far as single-stream recycling was concerned. Should have been no surprise to you.
The surprise to me, Charlie, if you don't mind, is that there was clearly an indication that the market was changing. There is a reason why we agree that we are moving to dual-stream. You don't see on this paper, it doesn't say that the City of Kingston is sticking with single-stream no matter what. We're making that a change. What is the most frustrating to me was the change in agency policy wasn't about whether the agency was going to continue to accept single-stream or not. It's the willingness to allow us to make this transition. And what the agency is doing by basically creating an arbitrary six-month deadline was basically telling us that, you know, we don't want to do it anymore. We want you to do it instead.
It's not that we don't want to do it anymore. We can't afford to do it anymore.
But I'm paying your costs. And if I'm not paying your costs, I have yet to hear from the board that you want more from me than the $15 a ton that I'm...
Steve, Steve, with all fairness, you say you're paying the costs. MSW costs $103 a ton to ship to Seneca Meadows from here. You know that.
Yep.
Okay? You were paying $20 a ton for SSR.
Yep.
And we couldn't handle it for $20 a ton, and you... And we said there were going to be add-ons as far as handling and shipping.
Yep.
And you said you would readily accept that. You know you're up to $77 a ton now?
I do.
You know that, right?
I do. And I just want the $77 a ton to continue until I can get new bins.
We may not have any control over that, Steve. That may go to $97 a ton.
And then I continue to pay it. Your current fee schedule says that all of those costs get shifted to me. So if you go to $97 a ton... What's our current rate?
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, with the fifty.
Yeah, right. So we are, you know, at this point, your current fee schedule is basically passing those costs onto us, and we recognize that. We know it's not great. That's why I'm moving to dual-stream recycling, because your current structure isn't going to charge us.
Okay, okay.
It's zero.
Your points are all well taken. However, for you to say to us, we'd like to have you continue to do that, is an imposition to us because we have other operations geared for the space that we're using for what you were doing. And one of them is the composting operation, which is up and running and doing very, very well, and we expect it to do even better. And so that space that we were allocating to you when we let you know last April, that space is no longer available to you because we need it. Okay? So that is the essence as far as the board is concerned. If we say to you, Steve, and I can understand where you're coming from. I'm a constituent of yours, okay? If we say we'll continue it till June, we're losing out on the other end. Are you ready to compensate for us for what we're losing out?
Would you mind letting me know what exact... Because right now, we dump on the floor where you currently accept both dual-stream recycling and single-stream recycling.
Right, right.
And so what part of that floor is being taken up by composting?
Our plan is to move this single-stream area and use that for a bagging operation. We're all set up with grants.
We've already bought.
Because I was under the assumption we were stopping this on January 1st, so I can move forward with other plans. And just so everybody's clear, two other finances, I do know that, you know, right now, Republic is not charging us for the hauling. And a lot of times, we don't have the trucks, and we have to use our own vehicles. I do know that that will no longer be available January 1st. So if we're clear on that, that it's not just the $15 a ton anymore. It could go up another $20, $30 a ton, I don't know, whatever the haul is.
Did you say $120, $130 a ton?
It could go up another $20 or $30.
Another $20 or $30.
Right, because I was already told by Republic that they're gonna start charging everybody for hauling January 1st, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So.
I just want to back up a moment and return to a couple of these points, Mayor. First of all, I want everybody to understand, and I think we all know this and it's been assumed, but I want everybody to understand what we're talking about here. This facility is a dual-stream facility. We are... Our MRF separates dual-stream recycling. Our only service for the city, for anybody else in Ulster County as a president, would respect a single stream, is to take the single stream from the hauler, from the city, essentially store it on our floor, and then wait several days till we have enough, and then either we send it down to Beacon to Republic, or Republic comes and picks it up. We're essentially floor space.
Drop-off.
And so the question on the table today is for your six-month transition, which we understand, things take time, we get that. You're going to be on single stream for some portion of 2019. The question is whether that single-stream operation to transfer to Republic is done on your floor space or our floor space, and there are problems with both. The problem, as Charlie succinctly described with our floor space, is that we were going to use our floor space to expand our composting operation. And in particular, that's where we were going to be bagging the compost. Currently, we sell compost as a loose material, so people have to come, pick it up, essentially haul it away. Once we start bagging it, it becomes much more valuable and useful to John Q. Public and becomes... And it really enables us to do real recycling, which is to take people's waste and give it right back to them as something useful. It's something we're really excited about, and it's something that this floor space is going to be used for. If we were to use it to continue SSR for the city, then our floor space becomes a continuation of nothing more than a dumping ground to haul this material away, and your floor space is not being used. When we made our vote that you referred to in our last meeting, we had as extensive a discussion as we could, because people from the city were not here, to determine whether or not, to paraphrase Charlie's initial question, whether there's anything that we could do that the city couldn't do. I mean, fundamentally, it's floor space, but obviously there are... We need people to facilitate that activity. You need some equipment. Both our executive director and our operations director, who are familiar with the city to some whatever extent, assured us that essentially all of the operations that were needed to be done, that the city could pick up and do. Mayor, what I hear you saying is that there are difficulties in doing that, but I'm not hearing you saying that it's impossible to do.
We don't have a floor.
You have a floor.
We don't have a floor.
Oh, you do.
We have not enough of a floor.
We don't have enough.
Right now, you've got a number of boxes on the floor. If you move those boxes out... I was up there. I know what I'm talking about. If you move those boxes out, you've got a floor almost the size of the floor that we have here.
The floor...
And then...
Go ahead.
Go ahead. And then, at the end of the floor, is the tractor-trailer pit, where the tractor-trailers pull in, and then the backhoe on the floor picks up what your packers are dumping and starts to transfer to Republic's tractor-trailers, hopefully. But it seems to me that you're capable of doing this.
Well, you obviously didn't walk to the back of that. There's a compactor back there. There isn't a ramp. It drops into a compactor, which used to do the old-style compaction trailers. So it's not set up. There is no way to get a trailer in there without major renovation.
Well, all right, I stand corrected. I didn't look at that, but I remember when tractor-trailers went through there, when Jay Hogan had your job. Tractor-trailers were loaded there.
This is the floor space.
Yep.
Behind there is a giant hopper.
Exactly.
There's no entrance in or out of that. That's all hydraulic, mechanical hopper. Gets pushed into there, compacted to a smaller hopper, which then pushes into the back.
Of the tractor-trailer.
Right.
Why is that not available now? Why couldn't you...
It hasn't been used.
With some modifications?
Well, it would be an expense, yeah, and it takes...
Wow, exactly what we're talking about, expense, okay? Because we're gonna have to hold up... Excuse me. We're gonna have to hold up our compost operation to accommodate you guys.
It's not just expense.
And I tell you.
It's time to get it done.
Well, yeah.
Okay?
Listen, I understand.
It's manpower, machinery.
It'll take you about two hours a week. I already ran the calculations. So it'll take you about two hours a week. And I just want to put things in perspective, just so everybody understands. We load all the single stream for everybody that brings it to us. And Welsher's our biggest provider, right? City's number two, but Welsher's number two. But just for everybody to think about this, the floor space that I use is probably 40 by 40 feet.
For SSR?
Yeah. So it depends on how... I don't know how big a floor you have, but I've got... That MRF is about 100 feet long and by about... It's about 100 by 300. And this only takes one small corner of that building. It's enough to get a tractor-trailer in, and it's enough to swing a boom around for... And we're loading it not... We're loading it at a really bad angle because we're loading it up. It's not designed for that. You know, like, a transfer station usually have two different levels to make it load. You can load a lot quicker.
No, we're not doing a typical load of waste. We're doing just a kind of floor operation that wasn't designed for this particular purpose.
It wasn't designed to be at the same level.
Right.
Ideally, you want to be offset, okay, like our garbage transfer station. But, you know, our guy can load a trailer in 25 minutes, and that's 15, 20 ton.
Some gearing, though, is that you don't have that operation, you don't have the ability to do that kind of operation where you're picking up into a larger tractor-trailer to be hauled off.
There's, again, we would have the floor that, you know, we spoke about, you know, we wish we could just push it off the end, and we don't. And so we don't have the... I don't even know if we have the grapple arm that would be able to...
Not at this time, no.
So...
So, Tim, I wanted to ask you...
Didn't we offer the grapple hook, the extra one that you had to the city?
We have a brand-new grapple.
Yeah.
It's gonna fit our machine, though. But it could.
It does. Somebody checked it out and said it did. I don't know that.
I would just point out, these are the technical considerations that we wrestled with last time. This is... And for me personally, this was my biggest concern, and I've expressed it several times, that I wanted to know whether there's anything that we could do for you that you couldn't do for yourself. And we... I mean, the clear answer from our staff was that there was nothing in this. So this is the first time we're hearing this, and I'm not 100% certain how to react. We hear what you're saying, and frankly, we need the technical input to know the answer to this, because I think we're... What we feel is that the use of our operation is valuable enough that we'd like you to, you know, we'd like you to expand your abilities if it's reasonable, but if it's impossible, we understand that nobody wants SSR to build up for six months. We get that. And so this is new information, to the extent that it's true and compelling, and we just don't know that yet. We haven't... Charlie's not here, unfortunately. Is Charlie around? Can we...
Unfortunately, he's having refrigerator delivered today.
Okay. So I don't know how to react. Again, we had a clear statement from our two staff people that... Who have knowledge that this was a very doable thing, and now you're telling us otherwise. And this is... To me, this is... We can go back to 2011, we can talk about everything else, the money, et cetera, but this is... Nobody wants the garbage to build up, but we also want to move forward. And if you've got a floor that can be used with a little bit of modification, including personnel modification, we understand that you'd have to reconfigure some people and maybe move some from here to there and do some things, but we thought that that was a useful exercise, and I do not know how to react to new technical information at this point.
Steve, I'd like to ask the mayor a question. You were notified in July, not only the City of Kingston, but two towns, Sorgdies and Ulster. In the time moving forward, Town of Ulster, Town of Sorgdies moved into dual-stream. Now, six months later, here we are in the City of Kingston. Why does it take the City of Kingston six months to make a decision as opposed to... You know, you had... I feel you had adequate time to make a decision and get back to us. And now, here we are at the 12th hour.
I mean, we met with Tim in early November, just... And I sent the letter on November 15 asking for permission officially. So, you know... And the other piece that makes Kingston different is that, my understanding is, is that we are the only municipal customers that pick up single-stream with their own trucks and their own equipment. And so unlike other communities, we are the only municipal service provider.
That's why you're getting in at $20 a ton.
Yeah. And so, you know, we, in order to change our entire operation, you know, we needed to look at what the different options were. I think we needed to look at, you know, was the City of Kingston going to stay single-stream forever? You know, were we going to change our oper... You know, were we going to change our oper, so we had to run those cost-benefit analysis. You know, we had to look at what were the costs going to be to get new totes delivered? We had to, you know, decide exactly operationally, how are we going to pick this up? So think about it, right now, I have the appropriate amount of equipment to pick up trash and recycling on an every-other-week basis. So right now, if you live in the city of Kingston, you have one tote. That tote is picked up once every two weeks. Operationally, we can't afford to add new trucks or new drivers because of this issue that's occurring. And so we had to figure out, how are we going to actually pick up a whole nother separate bin full of separated recycling? And that's not an easy thing. And so it took us a while to run the numbers, to look at our manpower. And to be honest, we're still not sure if we're going to be able to do it. Because we're basically taking what was, you know, bi-weekly yard waste to now not picking up yard waste practically at all. And it's now going to be whenever we can. And it's going to really, you know, harm the residents of the city of Kingston, you know, already because of this transfer. And so we had to flush all of that out. I then needed to go to the common council, and as you know, it takes a while to work through the political process to be able to get the support needed to bond four hundred thousand dollars to basically redo a program that the council just bonded four years before, another four hundred thousand dollars to buy the totes to begin with. And so, you know, we needed to build support. I mean, Charlie was on the council when he approved moving to single-stream recycling and buying totes to move forward with it. And so, you know, we have to be able to, you know, that all had to happen within that six-month period of time. So actually, in terms of government speak, the fact that we're all the way to this point is actually pretty remarkable. And so I just, I've got the money, I've got the plan, I have everything in motion. It's just a matter of, come January first, I either still bring the material to you or I have to figure out another way to handle it.
Like Republic.
And I, I don't believe that we are going to be able to handle it, the transfer station, which means that I may have to do an even quicker somehow transfer of convincing residents to recycle differently. And I'm most likely going to be bringing you contaminated recycling.
As you have been.
And I'll end up paying a hundred and three dollars a ton, but you're going to be getting material here that may not be exactly perfect.
No, I see, I see in a city different colored totes, so there's these big brown ones.
The brown tote is MSW. That's strictly MSW. The blue tote is the one that's used for recycling.
Steve, if I may, just a couple of questions. As the attorney for the agency, attorneys are geared to try and resolve issues before you fight, okay? What I'm seeing and hearing is something, as Dave said, for the first time, that you have some real issues in your mind about picking up.
Statistical issues.
Yeah. Perhaps this timeframe, six months, can be shortened as a way of, both sides. Because we need the use of space, you need our help. But six months seems like a lot of time. And we do a lot of these biddings too, but there are statutes that allow you on emergency to, to go out and get something without a bid. That's one thing I would suggest. That, that would save you a good month. You certainly, this could be deemed an emergency, I would say.
If I could carry that a step further, Steve, your transfer station is on an eight-acre footprint. It's big. There's plenty of room up there to store. If you had to store for six months, you could store there. And then when you got going with what you were going to do, just reload your trucks where, from where it's stored. That's eight acres up there.
But we, we may not have the permits to do that, so just to.
You wouldn't be able to store it outside. It has to be, it has to be uncovered.
Let me, let me finish, Steve. And the other thing I see in here, the totes to be delivered in March and distributed in May, well, there's, all of April, it's, doesn't, that you, looks like a mother month, another month, you might say. So.
If I could, let me just go, I'll go over that a little bit more in detail. And so because we've given out, so there are basically, we need to buy seven thousand bins, sixty-eight hundred bins. So bins come stacked without wheels, without lids. So each and every bin needs to get their wheels assembled and lids attached. Once they're attached and assembled, they need to be driven on a trailer, a flatbed, and delivered door-to-door.
And recorded.
And recorded, residence, name, address, to each and every of the seventy-eight hundred residential units within the city. It took us four years to get the entire city to move towards single-stream recycling with the agency. We basically did it one day at a time. In this, I'm proposing to do it in a month and a half, to be able to get all of the totes put together, all of the totes with new lids, all of the old totes have to have the lids that have stickers that are molded into them changed. Because right now, the bin is telling residents to put everything in it. Obviously, Tim does not want everything in the can, bottle, and glass bin. He just wants cans, bottles, and glass. And so every single recycling can that's currently out there that you see, the blue ones, are going to be relabeled, restickered, and, you know, reeducated. And so the other reason that we need, I believe, six months plus is that, as folks who have worked in the recycling industry know, that changing public behavior is not something you can just do like that. You know, I think it's taken the agency forever to convince people to take lids off containers or to not put their yogurt container in dirty. We are now basically going to be telling people a whole, entire new concept of recycling that even though for the last six years, they've been putting all of their paper, cans, bottles, everything into one, they're now going to have to separate again. I want that by the end of June, to be able to say firmly to Tim that I know that that paper truck that's headed to you is going to be good-quality paper. And if I don't have the time to do that and to get our residents on board, you're going to get really bad-quality paper because there's still going to be some cans and some bottles mixed in. Or vice versa, you're still going to get some paper in your cans and bottles bin. And so that's why that I, I do think that we do need to, you know, I could rush and get the totes delivered, you know, and I could see if we can get some emergency procurement done. But even if I do, you wouldn't want me to just drop the totes on people's doorsteps tomorrow. Because I can assure you that when I go to pick them up next week, they're not going to be anything that you can accept.
Okay, and one of the things you said, you, we were talking about, you were talking about initially six, needing six months.
Yeah.
But then you said six months plus. In the meantime, we're looking, we're, we're giving up that choice real estate of ours for your operation, thinking that, and you said six months, but I'm thinking six months is way too long because we need it, we need it for the composting operation that is, is in gear right now and, and building. I'm a little bit concerned about that. It seems as though you're a little vague on exactly how much time you need.
This is not vague. I think that your concern with my last letter was that I asked for a few months. That was, you know, what we had, you know, unfortunately, you know, I think that there was some miscommunication between Tim and I and the board. When I met with Tim and we both left believing that, you know, we were going to get approval for an extension. Tim came back to me and said, you know what? I, I can't make this decision.
Yeah, well, I told you at the meeting, I can't make this decision, just go to the board.
No, but I think you were favorable, generally.
Well, I don't know if I was favorable, I, because I can't answer for the board.
Yes, I know.
I can't answer for the board. So don't, don't put boards in my mouth.
We went to the board with a letter, and to be honest, I thought it was just.
Well, the letter was vague.
Yeah.
And it said a few months.
Yeah.
Which was an indefinite amount of time.
Yeah.
We know that we're facing a, an operation that we'd like to start in January. But I'd like to ask Tim, Tim, if we were to grant this extension, what kind of, number one, what kind of budgetary impacts do you see to the agency? Possible risks to the agency? Given the new problem that the whole world is facing with single-stream, is there a possibility that we're going to face where Republic will not pick up and we will be stacking up trucks or loads in violation of DEC mandates, risking, again, fees or fines against us because of that? So what are our impacts if we were to extend this?
Well, we didn't put the acceptance of single-stream in our budget at all. You know, we recreated our budget back in July and it went to the board in August for draft review, so we're not, we haven't budgeted for this. I can tell you that, you know, there are days that we have to run our own trucks, which is a cost that we're not passing on to the city or anybody else. We're eating all those costs right now. So even though we're charging this fifty-dollar-a-ton loading fee, that covers our personnel in the agency, our fuel for the excavator repairs and so forth. That's the number we came up with and, which I'm going to tell you is an accurate number. And that's pretty standard in the industry. That's a, that's a pretty, pretty good number. We ran our own numbers, that's what we came up to. I can tell you this, I know that Republic, I was at a meeting this morning with recycling people from around the Hudson Valley, and they are going to be charging on January one. I don't know what that number is going to be. You know, I'm guessing, just knowing the industry, you're probably in the twenty to thirty-dollar range. Probably not too far off, but, but they will be charging for that. And, and then the board's going to have to make a decision, are we going to continue running our employees and our trucks? If not, because I do have to use those, I'm trying, right now, we scramble because we have to get rid of leachate in, in the landfills. So when days don't show, when trucks don't show, if they don't, then we are on a emergency basis here, where I'm calling a driver in or something to try to run a single-stream down, because I've got leachate issues at landfill, whatever the case may be. So, you know, these are the things that we're going to continue to deal with. And unless you say we're not going to run the trucks and if Republic doesn't show up, they don't show up. See, we're not, we're not, you don't have a contract with that. So, you know, it's, it's a spot basis.
Well, I want to just, from my perspective, I'm anticipating the very likely possibility that if we were to continue single-stream service, or even if you do your own, that there will be substantial unforeseen costs. One of the reasons why we proposed the action, and by the way, Mayor, I want to be clear, I proposed that initial resolution in April. And that had both single-stream changed rates and also it had the ultimate resolution Tim mentioned, which was that our budget was not going to reflect single-stream. So we were talking about ending it back in April for January first. But I'm anticipating that there will be very substantial costs. I'm anticipating it may collapse, that Republic, that Republic may go down south. And what I would point out is that although you correctly characterize it as, you're essential, you're essentially covering our costs, the mechanism is that we tabulate the costs from the last month and project them in rates to the next month. From my perspective, if this were to continue, and this is not prejudging what we will do, it's not going, that's not going to be the structure. The structure will be that whatever costs we have borne, including significant unforeseen costs, will be charged. There's a chance this market's going to collapse, to be blunt. In fact, I'd be, I'd be surprised if it didn't. We've got one last, one last outlet left to us and that's, that's a very thin thread. And when that goes, we're looking at problems ranging from DEC fines to, to whatever else.
And if that collapses on my watch during the next six months, you know, we will be even less prepared to handle it because we are not in this odd way.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
Just to be clear.
Well, so that's, that's just, for me, that's going to be a bottom line. I want to address a couple of other points that, that were made. Actually, you know what? If anybody else has a comment, go ahead, because I, I want to scatter some thoughts.
Okay. Steve.
When you get the new totes, are you convinced or comfortable that that's going to resolve the entire issue?
I think what it will do for us is, A, it will move the city to dual-stream, which I think is what the agency wants. You guys have said time and time again that you are a dual-stream facility and that you'll take dual-stream facility and that it's a moneymaker for the agency. And that, you know, I think that that would be a good thing for everybody involved. And so, yes, it could be six more months of pain and potentially loss of new revenue from compost, but by having the city switch to dual-stream, in the long run, you may see yourself getting that back.
And also Kingston would profit from that, too.
We don't. Well, and see, we won't have to pay you anymore, but we don't profit in the savings, or we don't profit in your profit. So if we sell, if you sell our cardboard for seventy dollars a ton, you guys keep all that, we don't.
But when the markets take, we also take the cost.
Until you start charging us.
So.
Like you did with the single-stream.
Well, that's.
But, but, but we're not, we're not a single-stream facility.
The agreement we have now with Kingston would not transfer those costs to Kingston. If we were to incur, say we extend after January one, we would have to have come to some agreement for some of these unexpected costs.
Right now, we're just, we're just charging a rate from last month plus fifteen dollars.
Correct.
Our average rate plus fifteen dollars. That's going to change. They would have, they would have to cover any, any unforeseen cost.
There's going to be shipping costs. And as a, you know, from Republic, but, I mean, they've already indicated that.
I was just indicating that as a baseline. I, I, I want to also mention that I'm aware that this is a significant change and, and it's a change in the right direction. It's what we foresaw a while ago and, and I understand the transition. I'm actually, the fact that it's going to take six months longer is not a huge surprise to me and I understand, and I appreciate actually what you're doing in the transition. The question is, how do we handle single-streaming the interim? What's in the best interests of the general public during that interim period in terms of which agency is both set up for it and also which agency has, is, you know, where the resources can be best used? One of the things that we're seeing is that if you were to pick it up, then we're using two floors for two different operations, both of which serve the public. If we were, if we were to continue it, then we're only using one floor and the public is losing out on a valuable service that we would have provided. And that's a very strong concern for us. And that's basically going to be my primary concern. And it's to figure out whether or not you can, in essence, adjust to that. And as Ken mentioned, there may also be a way to split the difference. It may take you a couple of months or not, and we need to figure that out. I also want to mention, I had a conversation with Tim before this meeting and I'm glad to, I was glad to find out we were very much on the same page. To the extent that you need any technical assistance during that period, people that have been in the business and know how the hooks fit and other issues, Tim and Charlie will be available to you for any technical assistance that you need for that period. We can, we can certainly help out with that.
Yeah, we can help out.
That doesn't completely solve the problem, but we have to figure out essentially what's the best for the overall public during a transition period that is quite understandable. I understand you, initially, we're looking at SSR and there are a bunch of other things and that, you know, the fact that it's take, if you can pull a transition to dual-stream off in six months, that's a positive thing going forward for the public. It's where we need to be in general. So we, we just need to figure this out. And as Ken mentioned, if there's a way to, if there's a way to split the difference and get things moving, moving up quicker, that's better. I also want to point out, as other people had said, I was very concerned because your initial submitted to us, for whatever reason, didn't really have a date. It sort of looked, with all respect, like we were kicking the can down the road. The first time we saw six months was actually the day after the newspaper reported our decision in the previous meeting that we were not going to, to, to continue to accept it. And that's the first time that I saw you mention six months and there was no detail on that. And so I do appreciate seeing the detail now, but as both Charlie and Ken mentioned, we need to be sure that it isn't just sort of window dressing and kicking the can down the road. And, and whether that process can be crunched a little bit, not in terms of dual-stream. I understand you, you want the time to bring the public up to speed, but whether there's a way to transition your own facility. These are the things that are weighing on, on at least me right now and I would presume the board.
I think the key thing is six months or less, not or more.
Well, you said six months plus, that's what concerned me a little bit.
Who said that, I guess? Who said six, well, I mean, six months, I'm asking, it is six months plus, right? I'm asking to July one. It's December.
I understand, I think the board did it. You mean, it could be six months or more when you said plus.
No, I mean, I think I'm very clear.
You mean, six months from January plus.
Steve, in your rush to dual-stream recycling, and that's a good thing because this is a dual-stream operation, so that's a good thing.
And the world is a dual-stream world.
Well, and, and so I want to address that. But you're, you're banking a great deal on another round of totes, and I understand that. But give some thought to this because it's been mentioned, and I hope you've done some research on it, but when that arm comes out in your new totes and picks up a mix of glass, cans, and plastic, and raises it up and dumps it, that glass shatters and contaminates the whole load. Be careful of that, Steve, because that could be your next major problem.
Currently, Ulster County law mandates that we recycle glass. And until the county law changes.
Yeah, but it can't be shattered.[1691.72] For what that's worth.
But, I mean, as you guys know, and as I've seen at the agency, you know, there, there is a lot of movement of the material. There's a lot less movement of the material if the material is staying here, you know, because it's getting dumped into our truck, and then it's being brought here, dumped on the floor.
Yeah, but it's, it's the height. When that arm is up in the, in the air, it's pretty high. And when those bottles drop, they shatter.
Mayor, let me ask you a question. There are projects, you know, Roundout Gardens, Colonial Gardens. Do you have totes for each individual apartment? Or do you have a, a common?
They, they provide a common area where their residents.
So they have boxes there that they can, you can separate it there?
Yeah, okay. But again, right now, they're single stream, and so again, a large apartment complex are going to take some time to transition.
Steve, I'm going to mention some people you probably know, and they've given me permission to do this. Julie Donovan, who works for Jordan Trading. Jordan Trading being the granddaughter of Herzog's, who runs, okay. They are on the telephone regularly with China. And they have been ordering and shipping and manipulating the cardboard and paper market with China. She was in Dunkin' Donuts this morning, Julie Donovan, I've known her a long time. I said, Julie, what's going on with the cardboard recycling coming out of China? She said, not anymore. We don't have an order. So as far as she knows, single stream is in trouble, okay? Globally, which brought us to why we're here, okay? So it's not going away, according to the people who have been handling these orders. I just wanted, for what that's worth, I just wanted to throw it out.
Maybe for Tim and Ken. If we lose Republic, we can't accept any more single stream, right?
Yeah, we reached out months ago to Port of Albany, Waste Connections. And they, numerous times when we turned our phone calls, they had no interest in taking our material.
Okay, but we only have one, one point now, and that's tenuous. So, and that would, that would put you flat out.
Yeah.
I mean, because we only have so much storage space, you know, which doesn't amount to anything with regard to a, to a city. So I'm wondering if we should not be talking a little bit to NCON about the possibility that we're on the edge of a crisis. Because if we lose the sole purchaser, we're both in, in a world of hurt. So, and we should have, we shouldn't wait until it happens, especially if we can just pick up the phone and say, listen, this is what we're looking at. We have some really dire.
It's a good idea. We actually, it's a little bit old news, but we were talking to NCON in this office, I don't know how many months ago, it was probably six months ago. And I basically told them SSR is no longer, it's practically MSW. And they, they were completely unresponsive. I mean, they just didn't want to hear it.
That's their problem. We need to force them to be responsive because we're sitting on the edge of an emergency.
Tim explained this more about than I do because it was really my first exposure to the, to the issue and to discussing with them. But I thought we were presenting them something that was both obvious but also maybe a new policy they might want to pick up on, and they had no interest in it whatsoever.
And for Ken, I was wondering if we're going to have to amend a motion that we made earlier this year. Do, do we open the door for all the other single stream, like possibly we do?
Does the agency have the ability, you know, because first and foremost, part of its mission is to serve, you know, the, kind of the public entities in the county, that, you know, there is a, able to be a different type of relationship with a municipality than there may be with a private hauler? And maybe one way you handle whether you open the door to others, you know. But, you know, I think the relationship that municipalities have with this agency, I think far outlasts any potential, you know, private hauler relationship that exists. Obviously, flow control changed the solid waste management agreements that we used to have between the agency and, you know, our communities. But I think that, you know, it's important, you know, when we are in times of challenges like this that, you know, we remember that the agency was designed and built to support the municipalities, I believe, first and foremost, who serve the needs of their residents. Obviously, private haulers can bring waste in from outside of our county and may have customers that are outside of our jurisdiction.
I think Jack was restating my concern when I was asking him before. What happens after January one if we run, incur risks like what Jack is referring to? And Republic doesn't send trucks down?
Monetary risks we can probably pass on, but if it's complete closure.
Complete closure. So what happens to you, Mayor? If, if that happens and we are stacked and we cannot store anymore on our floor, and you have two or three weeks of storage, what happens to Kingston?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm sure Tim talks to Republic as, that's where we bring our material now. But all of our conversations with Republic have been them restating the fact that they've just been purchased by a multi-billion dollar company, that they've just invested millions of dollars into their plant, and at no point anywhere in the foreseeable future do they plan to close or reduce services. That's what they have told to us. And with, whether we can go within six months, go from, that's the message that they're publicly stating, to complete closure, I really, I mean, I know things move fast sometimes in the business world, but I don't know if that is necessarily the, the case for Republic anyway because of their new commitment to purchasing that plant just a short time ago.
That's new news to us. But I remember, Kim, you were saying that Republic has, has reduced their services and restricted the number of truckloads that they're sending out.
Right, they restricted us to have eight truckloads we can bring. They also moved from three shifts down to one. And just so everybody's aware, that that purchase of that plant was part of a package deal. Right, that purchase of a whole bunch of plants in the community, and that would just happen to be one of them. So they didn't.
So going back to my question, though, I know, and I hear what you're saying there. Worst-case scenario is, you, you may get stopped storing two or three or more weeks of SSR.
That's why time is of the essence. Six months has got to be pushed.
Isn't that true?
I mean, I think that.
That's a possibility.
If we get to the point where there is no place that accepts the recyclables that we're generating, I would work with Waste Management or County Waste to ask them to take it. I mean, they pick up Kingston residents and businesses currently and bring it to their material. I'm assuming that, you know, the corporate interests would be willing to take our material if we were in a bind. I don't know what, they're leaving Kingston with trailers full of single-stream material to go to Albany and to their other plants. And so I think that if we were in crisis mode, there are, there are still, everyone else in Ulster County gets in, you probably have single-stream recycling at your own house or at your business or your place, you know, that you visit.
That would be your plan, then?
Yes, is to work with.
Is to move with Waste Management or other carriers.
Yes, and I think that, and they're right here in Kingston, and, you know, I think that there are backups. Because again, ninety percent of Ulster County is currently still single-stream. We know that, right?
But the vast majority doesn't come here.
No, but I know, but like, if single stream ends, like, there's a much larger problem that you guys will have. Because you then have ninety, you have a hundred and sixty thousand people that don't have a recycling outlet. And as the agency that's responsible for managing solid waste.
But it's not, no, that's, we should be clear on this because some, you've said this several times and also about, you know, the agency, you know, big policy change. It's not a big policy change because we actually don't manage recycling in the county. We accept dual stream for use in our facility, we've accepted single stream for our floor. We don't have flow control over recycling. Any recycler, including the city and the private haulers, are free to do with their recycling whatever they want. And so if we say we're not accepting this particular type of recycling, then they can and should and must find some other way to do it, including single stream. So to put it in the vernacular, which I'll apologize for, in terms of a private hauler or anybody else, single stream is their problem. If we don't want to take it, we have every right enough to take it, and they have to figure that out, including going through the same machinations you are to try to tell their customers, who include me, that we've got to switch over, you need another box, you need to do different things. That's for everybody to figure out because we do not, do not manage recycling in the county. We are providing, we are providing two services. One, dual stream for the municipalities that bring that to us. And currently, temporarily and low-techly, single stream for those that want to dump it on our floor temporarily. So.
And I don't want to get into it, you know, I will just say that, you know, per the DEC, you are the designated planning unit for solid waste management in this county. And it's disheartening to hear that, you know, as that planning unit, you feel it's not your responsibility to manage recycling in this county. Even before flow control, you were still responsible for managing solid waste in this county. If people chose not to bring it to you, fine, but you were still the agency that was responsible for setting the vision, setting the goals, setting.
And we are, we're planning and we're continuing to plan. Part of our plan, we're going to be, by the way, we're going to be revising our plan very soon. The DEC has waited a while to get back to a somewhat previous plan you probably know about. But part of that planning was back at the beginning of last, of this year to realize that single stream was no longer going to work for our facility. And anybody in the, in the county, anybody in the Hudson Valley should have taken our resolution as part of our signal, our plan, that we better get away from it. But what we're talking about here is much more narrow. It's whether we're continuing this service to essentially allow our floor to be a quasi-transfer station for single stream on a very low-tech basis. We're not, we're not separating it. Many, millions of dollars of investment in the MRF doesn't really go for this other than the floor itself. So it's much more narrow than that. It's really, and I would, I'd rather narrow the issue rather than, rather than expand it. It's really what needs to happen for the best interest of the public, given your facilities and your capabilities over this transition period, and given our facility and our needs to use the facility for the benefit of the public. It's more narrow, it's whether we can split the difference, it's whether you're as incapable as you're presenting, which we haven't begun to crunch yet, or whether our initial vision was that you could handle it is the correct one. And frankly, everything else is, is superfluous at this point. If and when this market collapses, the other haulers are going to.